Wouldn't work well. Wish we had a button just to have to keep pushing like that. Maybe on the new, maybe on the new system it'll be better.
They're all unanimous.
All right, we got 4:30. We're gonna call the meeting to order. We're gonna start with the pledge allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Is it a moment of silence? Thank you. Starting off with citizen concerns, anyone to be heard, anything that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to item three, which is approval of the agenda. I'll move that. Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Moving on to the consent agenda. Items four through eight constitute a consent agenda, routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item four is approval of the minutes of the March 22nd, 2022 meeting. Item five is approval of claims. Item six, A, approval of bond council engagement agreement. And six B is approval of the sale of the county farm and authorize the chairman to sign the purchase agreements. Item seven is a, from human resources, A is approval memorandum of personnel transactions. And seven B is authorization to initiate hiring process. Item eight from secondary roads, approved the permit to work in the right of way for Brownslake area homeowners and to direct the chair to sign the permit.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second, we got a motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. Any discussion on anything on the consent agenda? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. And we got a bunch of set times. We're actually early on. Oh, we could almost go up two. Dennis, what about item 13? Does that depend upon the? So we got three minutes.
Okay, we can do this pretty simple. We've gone through our CIP. We found out that we cannot borrow money, 1.2 million for the both Brownslake area and the beachfront there. So instead of that, we are proposing to use money from our general basic reserves, move that over to the conservation CIP project. And all, they moved us up.
Thank you.
And what we do there is do like we did with the Breezy Farm. The only difference here, they're gonna pay a little interest back to us, so we do make some money on our money. And we have plenty of reserves to allocate that out. They agree to pay us back in a 10-year period. It'd be 120,000 year plus one and a half percent interest. So that's about where we're at now. That way the project is started. It can proceed. And they have contracts already. They're ready to go down there. We wanna get it done before spring camping season, so enhance their revenues. If they do gain enough revenues down the road, which is to be seen, there is a possibility, I don't put that too dark, possibility, they could pay us back earlier, you know, maybe down to 10% or somewhere. See where the revenues are, but they'd guarantee they'll make the principal payment or the transfer back to us, just like the Breezy Farm, except we're charging interest.
This was somewhat time sensitive because let's, we'll start 4:01, is that right, or 4:05, something?
Contracts were signed and they're starting, in fact, some of it's starting later this week.
So basically, it was an issue with how bonding for conservation maximum was 300,000, so we're gonna do this out of reserves like we did for the Breezy Farm. I'll go ahead and make the motion on item 13.
I'll second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. Is there any other discussion or questions from board members?
So they are, just to confirm, you are picking up the interest?
Yes. Unless you would, so nice to be kind to give a 0% interest, I just have to ask.
How about we do water and sewer instead?
What's that?
We'll do some water and sewer instead, potentially.
I'd like to do, let's talk about that later. Yeah, great. Yeah, it's just something that came up. We had thought this was all put in place and then talked to the bonding attorney. Things kinda fell apart and I think this is a working solution. So thank you so much.
Sounds good. All right, well, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Moving on to our 4:35 set time, which is item nine from Board Administration. It's a public hearing and sale of property. 1,006 Dubuque Street. We are now in a public hearing. Anyone to speak for or against the sale of the property? It's not the time to make bids. Just speak for or against the sale if anyone wishes to not sell it.
Hearing none, Mr. Chair. Move that the public hearing be closed. Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Any discussion on closing the public hearing? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes five to zero. We are now taking bids. If you want to bid on this, come up. State your name and your bid. You may also bid again if somebody else bids.
Bonnie Silvernagel. I wanna bid $212.
You can just stay up there if you're gonna bid back and forth.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear her bid.
It was 212, wasn't it?
212. I'll bid 450.
Well, you guys state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Cody Bulware.
Okay, I'll bid 1,000.
Two.
2,000? Okay.
3,000.
4,000.
5,000.
Six.
7,000.
9,000.
10.
Oh, I think I better quit.
All right, looks like anyone else would like to make a bid on this property. We got our going bid at 10,000. All right. Seeing no one coming up to the stand, I'll move we sell the property to Cody Bulware for $10,000.
Second.
A motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Heather will take care of back there and thank you to all the bidders. And let's see where we are at. Dan, if you'd like to come up and talk about the ordinance here?
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Dan Priestley with Community and Economic Development. This is the, basically in preparation for the second reading of this floodplain ordinance. And basically what it is, is it's an amendment to the current zoning ordinance that has been approved by the DNR as, that meets federal guidelines. So it's basically about taking our ordinance, moving us up to what the federal expectations, regulations are for basically doing our local governance of the floodplain. And that ties strictly in with our membership in the National Flood Insurance Program. And so it's kind of in a sense housekeeping, in a sense to bring us up to the regulations. But there were a few aspects that are representative, it was at the last public hearing, mentioned from the DNR that a big change would be the accessory structures at 600 square feet is kind of the threshold level in terms of having to elevate or not elevate. And so they put that in there to kind of be clear on what that expectation is. But other items, when we issue floodplain development permits, are looking at items of significant value that need flood protection and floodproofing. Much of that is sustained through both formats. But the biggest shining difference would be the accessory structure. And the feds kind of put some language in there, term 100-year flood versus base flood elevation. Kind of some of the highlights in the packet material kind of shows that they were just kind of bringing some of the language more toward what the feds have used. And the way our ordinance is written now, the DNR really has a lot of authority over us in terms of the local floodplains. They technically have to approve the copy. They gave the county the copy. We looked at it. Then they go approve what the zoning commission looked at and is delivered to you for the recommendation. So that's kind of the basis of this.
So we're now in the 4:40 set time for the public hearing. Is there anyone to be heard or any questions of staff on this?
Hearing none, Mr. Chair. Move that the public hearing be closed.
I'll second that. So we got a motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. Any discussion on that from the board? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes five to zero. I'll move the approval of the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any discussion on the second reading? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes five to zero. Moving on to, thank you. Board Administration, 11A is approval of resolution ratifying, confirming, and approving publication of notice of public hearing.
I'll wait till 4:45.
Isn't that for the public hearing?
Yes.
So that's item B.
Okay, go ahead.
So approval of resolution ratifying, confirming, and approving publication of notice of public hearing. So which?
First one you're approving is for 421,000. That's our essential purpose, general obligation bond notes. We had to break this into two separate issues. When we borrow, we'll send out bids. I'll have Tina go out and give bids for the interest. We're estimating 1.65 possibly, so second will be the other part of the bond issue. But we have two these separate, hold separate hearings to, and we did publish last Friday, so we met the requirement of not less than four days. So the first one is 421,000. And then the public hearing, you'd open it up when the time comes. This is using the funds on both issues here for our CIP 22. Now, this includes some things that, you know, we haven't got bids on, such as the care facility. Turning that down, we did plug in a million dollars. If it's less, then we can reallocate that funds down the road to the public hearings for other projects. If it's less, we'll figure out where we're gonna get the money. Do we still have time left?
Yeah.
I can tell you what some of the projects are. One's the demolition cost for initial testing has 7,400. Daniel Wick allocation for equipment things has 125,000. Courtroom board, audiovisuals 77,915. Election equipment 172,574. Records management system 750,000. That's in correlation with the sheriff and the police department. That's our share. The WIT Security Institute, that's when we did the restructuring out there. I think they did some pordings or something out there. We did approve that. District California Windows 55,000. Data center remodeling 50,000. Prairie Hills demolition, a million. Website retrofit 75,000. Phone sets for WCICC 35,000. General obligation notes 8,000. That was an agreement we just signed or approved earlier for attorney phase of process all through. We did take out the 28th Street Fiber Optics. We took out 28th Street excess construction costs and 28th Street contingency site change orders. Lot of that, most of that would be covered through COVID funds. That is the amount of money that we would be responsible for over the 2.8 million that we did 28th agreement with the city. So anything over that we have to cover and we're planning on covering that through ARPA funds. Fiber optics is new service out there. And now the sewer water, things like that, and large one we can cover with ARPA funds. So that's around 400, 400 and above 20,000 that we don't have to borrow for. So what that results in, our debt levy, and I'll explain that when we get to the public hearing on the budget, reduce our debt service levy by $70,000. And I'll get into that when we get there.
Do I have to take action on levying?
Yes.
I'll move to approve the resolution ratifying, confirming, and approving publication and the notice of public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes five to zero and we are just about there on the set time. All right, they're at the 4:45 set time, public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the county they're under. So we're in a public hearing. Anyone to be heard?
Hearing none. I move the public hearing be closed.
Second, motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick. Any discussion from the board? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Now into item C, approval of resolution, instituting proceedings to take additional action.
I will move that.
Let's see.
Dennis, can you clarify exactly what we're doing with this motion?
This motion here, this is actually doing the legal side of it to go to the banks and get the money.
So this is for the CIP?
Yeah, this is the first 421,000. The next one will be a million 995. Total 2.415 million per 1,600,000.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Taylor. Any further discussion on this item? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Item D is approval of resolution ratifying, confirming, and approving publication of notice of public hearing. Which is this?
We did the notice, so we duly did our duty on notifying the public on Friday.
So is this item 11A or again, or?
Well, we just talked about 11A, then 11D is?
The backup doesn't really cover this.
Yeah.
This is for the 1.9 here. Okay.
Now, we're running, we're running side by side. They're duplicates, basically on different amounts.
Okay. I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Moving on to the 4:47 set time for item E, which is public hearing on the authorization of loan agreement, issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the county they're under. We are now in a public hearing. Anyone to be heard from the public?
Can we get a little background? So can you translate for the public what exactly this item is taking up?
Okay, on this, it's a public hearing on 1.995 million, which was part of the list I read off here. We had to separate them because some qualify essential purpose. The geo bond on the other side was another issue where it didn't qualify. So with this set here, we're passing both of these and then we'll have one last one when we get to item number G, which will approve the levy. So what we're doing, we're approving these because we had to levy the money before we actually borrowed the money. So what this is, pre-certification of the tax rate and the bond schedule for both bonds together. But this covers all of our CIP projects for fiscal year 22.
Thank you. So we're now in a public hearing, Mr. Chair?
Yep. Anyone else to be heard on anything on this?
Hearing none, Mr. Chair. Move that the public hearing be closed.
I'll second. Motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. Any discussion from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes five to zero. Moving on to F, which is approval of resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action. I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes five to zero. And item G is approval of resolution authorizing the issuance and levying of tax for the payment thereof. I will move that.
Second.
On this, we're actually putting, we're doing like our normal CIPs. We're putting us a five-year schedule. So you'll see the schedule on page three, shows how much each year we're gonna levy. Includes interest and principal also. Now, the interest may vary a little bit, but not a whole lot.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes five to zero. So we are also now in our 4:50 set time from item 12A, Board Administration, public hearing to levy general basic property tax rate which exceeds statutory maximum.
Okay, this is the public hearing that we are exceeding the 350 cap. We have exceeded this for about the last 10 years. And we have the instance where, you know, not sustainable task or tax-based growth, unusual staffing circumstances. It hits all the criteria that we have to do this. We've done this for the last 10 years. And we are one of about 28 counties that do exceed the 350 cap. And more and more are going on as expenses rise, so eventually legislature have to look at this and maybe get rid of 350 cap and just raise it to four, four and a half. But for the time being, we're above the cap. I believe it shows that we are at 3... Hang on, right, 365. We're at 378, so we're 28 cents above the cap. About a little higher than it was last year, but a counterbalance with general sub, so I'll get into this a little bit here on the tax rates when we get to the next item.
We've never had a formal challenge to the action, have we, since you've been around, Dennis?
No. I had one individual call today. First name was Alan from the Ag Extension Secretary. He's just curious what this was, so I explained it to him there. And he was satisfied. But no, nobody's ever come before.
We're now in a public hearing, Mr. Chair?
We are now in a public hearing. If anyone else would like to speak on this item?
Hearing none. I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second, motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. Any discussion from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. So moving on to item B, which is public hearing on proposed fiscal year 2023 budget.
Okay, on this, I did give you a recap here. I'll go through. It's a two-page recap here of our budget. I do this every year. Where we stand as the current budget has been published. You'll notice on the first page, we have the new amended tax rates for fiscal year 23. I have incorporated the increase in revenue from the Treasury's office on three different items and also the difference in the lesser tax rate for debt service. So as you look at these rates here for countywide, city, townships, our actual rate is going down .01662, which is actually 1.7 cents per thousand. On the rural townships, which is all countywide levy, plus the rural townships, it's going down 2.153, basically 2.2 if I round up or down. So you see, the current budget, as it stands right now, this includes everything that we've done so far. You can see we're actually, instead of a flat rate, we're actually going down a little bit. We don't wanna go down a whole lot. The reason why, because with this 2% super majority or simple majority, we are above where we did pass a 5.0 super majority. And that's our base for the next fiscal year. So you always use the year we're budgeting here for the 23, 24, when you figure out our 2%, if it's below or above the 2%, which would require super or just simple majority. So we want to kind of stay right there with our tax asking. You look at our budgets here, our operating debt service capital. The reason we went up so much this year, now we did lose metal health, so that helped us a little bit. But you can see in our debt service, that went up 3.8 million. On our capital CIP, that went up 9 million. All that is attributable to the jail, because we have tax full rate, because we don't have any additional revenue coming in. As is for the 22, 23 budget. And also there's eight and a half million in here for our gravel road. So between those two, that counts for almost 12 million, $12 million of 13,700. Moving on, I made a, show you what this effect is. As it stands now, and I'll preface this, all the elected official ways deputies are all embedded in this number. Because that's what we started with. There's been no change yet. That's where we're at. So on a house in Sioux City, Iowa, I took a $100,000 house, rolled it back. And just to prefer, you know, give you an idea on rollbacks, you go down to the bottom. You look at the 22 and 23 rollbacks. So in a house in Sioux City, in 22, we could tax 56,000. On a house in 23, we could only tax 54,000. Agriculture went up because the value of agriculture based on productivity went up. So you noticed that did go up on the rollback and that's state order. We don't have anything to do with that. They have a formula down there. They have to follow. So that's why theirs went up and obviously commercial industrial is 90%. So now we'll go back up to the different classes. In the city residential and the city commercial industry, you'll see on city residential, $100,000 house rollback for 22 rollback. You see what it did for 23 rollback. Actually taxes on a residential house is going down 17,000, or 17, $17.19 or 4.25% reduction. Commercial industrial is actually going down 1.49 dollars per 100,000 rollback for a point minus 2, 3%. Now you get out to rural townships, residential, residential would be residential or residential ag class. That's on farms where it's ag class. They went down $23.11. The reason they went down more because the ag, rural basically levy dropped a little bit more than, you know, that helps them out in the rural. So they went down 4.25%, commercial industrial 1.93 dollars down for 100,000 of CEST and 22% down for 0.22 of 1% down. Then Ag Lands went up $46.34 based on 100,000 CEST values, 6.12. There's really nothing we can do about that because on productivity, they're assessed totally different than market value. Where on market value for residential, they have to be by law within 95% under to 105% over. So that's where you get the differentials. Obviously, on productivity, people may agree or disagree, but the productivity is getting better. So that does affect their taxes and their CEST values. Now, I don't know, you know, for next year, what this is gonna do. We already heard from the county CESTs are possibly a 60% increase in residential. And when you get to productivity with 7, 8 dollar corn, who knows where it's gonna go next year? But for the current year, this is where we're at. We have not a flat tax. We're actually going down 1.2 cents per thousand for countywide and 2.2 cents per thousand for the rural people and outside the city. And that's a recap of where we're at. I say includes everything that's present, so the board has accomplished what they set out to do as a flat tax, only we've even done that without affecting our next years. So on the public hearing, is there any public?
Anyone to be?
Go ahead.
I just say, just generally, I think it's, it's a good step to marginally reduce the rate as we're proposing here and to do so in a way that's been a gradual, you know, over the last eight years, to avoid a yo-yo effect and really, you know, you gotta think about businesses when they're coming in and expanding what they wanna see. They don't wanna see a bunch of chaos that we may deal with, with mental health levies coming on and dropping off. But I do think it's nice to highlight the fact that this has been, there hasn't been a a vast variance in a yo-yo effect, so just wanna make that comment.
Anyone else to be heard in the public hearing?
Good evening, Sheriff Sheehan. I want to commend the Board of Supervisors, the department heads, elected officials, and the staff members of Woodbury County for all your hard work during this budget process and having the county in a financial status that has us in a position to pass a balanced budget with a decreased tax rate. I would like to especially thank Finance Director Dennis Butler for his leadership during this difficult process. I think everyone in the room would agree that Dennis knows the budget and the county's financial status better than anyone else. That's true.
Hey, he's already standing.
Mine doesn't count. If you've followed the budget discussions over the last few months, you know the biggest item of contention is the Compensation Board's recommendations for elected officials raises, especially the raise recommended for the sheriff. In July 2021, Governor Reynolds signed a Back the Blue bill that included changing how the Compensation Board set the sheriff's salary. This bill was passed and signed in an effort to get sheriffs across the state fairly compensated compared to other law enforcement executives of similar sized agencies and to allow sheriff's offices to retain and recruit the best of the best. The new law states in part, quote, "In setting the salary of the county sheriff, the county compensation board shall set the sheriff's salary so that it is comparable to salaries paid to professional law enforcement administrators and command officers of the State Patrol, the Division of Criminal Investigation, of the Department of Public Safety, and city police chiefs employed by cities of similar population to the population of the county." After conducting comparisons and following the new law, the Compensation Board recommended to the Board of Supervisors an increase of 31.35% for the Woodbury County Sheriff. While this increase sounds unusually large, and according to one supervisor, quote, "is the largest pay increase in Woodbury County history," end quote, I won't disagree with that. However, my response would be that the position of Woodbury County Sheriff is the most underpaid sheriff in the history of Woodbury County. In fact, Michelle Scaff with the Auditor's Office ran a comparison of raises over the last 20 years, comparing wage plan, the auditor, the county attorney, the treasurer, and the sheriff. Over that 20-year period, the average annual increase for wage plan employees was 2.9%. Michelle, I don't know if you have that, was 2.9%. And I don't want to put words in her mouth, but I believe that's on the low end. That's a very conservative estimate because some wage plan employees would have had a matrix which would have taken them well over the 2.9% average. During that same 20-year average, elected officials raises averaged as follows. The auditor, 2.56. County attorney, 2.76. The treasurer, 2.88. And the sheriff, 3.87. And those numbers include this year's raises, recommended raises by the comp board. If you look at the 19-year average minus this year's raises, the numbers are even more indicative of that the wage plan employees over that 20 years have received more of an annual increase on average every year than every single elected official. Several supervisors have expressed concerns about fairness. And I think that the facts, looking at the 20-year history, tell us the raises recommended by the Compensation Board are fair in comparison. I do concede that Iowa law allows the Board of Supervisors to cut the Compensation Board's recommendation. But my question is, why would you? Why would you when the raise is already included in the budget with a 1.6 cent decrease in the countywide levy and a 2.1 cent decrease in the township levy per $1,000 evaluation? My purpose in speaking tonight is to make you and the taxpayers of Woodbury County aware of how the decision made tonight will likely affect public safety moving forward. The budget can and should be passed, in my opinion, as is. And if so, will have a significant positive impact on public safety. Passing the budget will allow the sheriff's office a better opportunity to retain and recruit the best people to serve the citizens of Woodbury County. We are struggling to retain and recruit the best as some choose to leave for private sector opportunities or go to other agencies who offer a higher salary. Please keep in mind, every time a deputy leaves, they take with them all the time and money we have invested in their training and experience. It also leaves a gap in service of at least eight months as we hire and train a new deputy so that they can work on their own. This gap causes additional expenses and overtime pay and increases burnout for those left to pick up the slack. Additionally, the current sworn administration is made up of five percentage deputies all in the room here. You have the chief deputy, two captains, and two lieutenants. Their salary is a percentage based on the sheriff's salary. And these five administrators have over 130 years of experience with the sheriff's office. And the sheriff's office is facing a very critical time over the next 12 to 18 months. We're going to a new records management system. We'll be hiring 15 to 20 new correctional officers and moving into a new jail in June of 2023. Any one of these events alone would be extremely taxing on an organization. We'll be doing all three simultaneously. The 130 years of experience these administrators possess is vital to ensure a smooth transition with minimal impact on public safety. It is my firm belief that the citizens of Woodbury County have certain expectations of the services they receive for the tax dollars they pay. As a recent business owner told me last week, quote, "There is a big difference between being fiscally responsible and cheap. I sure hope they don't go cheap on public safety," end quote. And as you can clearly see from the budget submitted to the Board of Supervisors, department heads and elected officials have presented very responsible budgets during a difficult financial time. Let me assure you, the Woodbury County Sheriff's Office takes fiscal responsibility very seriously. And we attempt to save taxpayers' money and focus on bringing revenue into the county's general fund whenever we can. Over the last five years, the sheriff's office has returned $339,640 to the county in unused discretionary funds, which would now be in the county reserves. Over the last five fiscal years, the total revenue generated by the sheriff's office was $4.564 million, which is a $912,890 per year average. If you combined the revenue with the money we've returned, our impact on the budget is $980,818 per year over the last five years. I think it's obvious the sheriff's office contribution to the annual budget far outweighs the impact of the recommended raise. I believe Auditor Gill is going to discuss four options that were prepared by Mr. Butler. And it's my understanding option three of the four were prepared at the request of the board, who wanted to look at cutting elected officials raises by at least $157,000 in order to offset the cost of the county bringing wage plan employees up to a 4% raise over the 27 pay periods, which again, I commend you for doing that for the employees. At the time that this was asked, the $157,000 would have come out of county reserves if there was no cut in the elected officials raises or somewhere else in the budget. But this is no longer the case due to the change in debt services that Mr. Butler referred to and an increase in revenue in the treasurer's office, both of these totaling $165,000. In other words, the current budget covers the $157,000 for wage plan and includes the Compensation Board's recommendations for raises for the elected officials, while at the same time lowering the countywide levy 1.6 cents and the township levy 2.15 cents. I think the goal of the board, that I heard repeated and confirmed from some members and Dennis, the original goal of the board at the beginning of the budget process was to maintain a zero tax rate increase. And this goal has been met and exceeded in option one. Please don't move the goalpost now. The people have put in the work. They met your goals and they exceeded them. Don't move the goalpost now. As we've been told since childhood, actions speak louder than words. Passing the budget as is will let your actions today speak for themselves and show that you truly back the blue and that it's not just a campaign slogan. I'm asking you to please pass the budget as is and allow us the opportunity to retain and recruit the best qualified people that we can to protect and serve the citizens of Woodbury County. I thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Pat Gill. I'm the Woodbury County auditor and recorder. I just wanted to reiterate, I sent this to you folks as a memo. It was something I worked with Mr. Butler on as we talked about different scenarios that were put before him by board members and the rest of us. We just worked together. Scenario one is the, this is the public hearing. This is where the Compensation Board's recommendations are considered. By law, you review them at the public hearing. The Compensation Board, for the attorney, the recommendation was 13%. The auditor was 9%. The sheriff was 31.35%. And the treasurer was 9%. And the supervisor is 22%. The impact that has is that biweekly is what we talked about a lot. I know a lot of folks still don't get that issue. But it is, the biweekly percentage for the attorney, the fiscal year is 13%. But the increase biweekly would be 8.81%. The auditors would be 4.96%. The sheriff would be 26.49%. And the treasurer would be 4.96%. And that is built into the budget as proposed and submitted to you for your consideration at this point. The second scenario was to reduce it to where the auditor and the treasurer would receive a 4% biweekly raise. And that would, the reduction means that you would reduce across the board as the law allows you to do by 11.11%. If you did that, the fiscal year percent for the attorney would be 11.56%. The auditor would be 8%. The sheriff would be 27.87%. And the treasurer would be 8%. The biweekly, as we treated, as you folks treated, the salaried wage plan employees would be, the attorney would get a biweekly raise of 7.42%. The auditor would be at 4%. The sheriff would be at 23.13%. And the treasurer would be at 4%. That would reduce tax askings by $37,552. Scenario three was to reduce the auditor and the treasurer's fiscal year percentage to 4%. That would mean you would reduce it 55.55% across the board, the recommendation. The attorney would receive a fiscal year increase of 5.78%. But the biweekly would be 1.86%. The auditor fiscal year would be 4%. Biweekly wage would, raise would be 0.015%, which would be a biweekly raise of $5.51. I can buy a beer now for $5.51 and by July 1st of 2023, I won't be able to buy the same amount of beer by a long shot. The sheriff is, would be at 13.94%. The biweekly percentage would be 9.72%. The treasurer, 4%. And the biweekly raise would be 0.015% or $5.51 per pay period. Scenario four, this talks about the Compensation Board doing, and that would reduce, I want to go back to scenario three, that would reduce tax askings by $187,832. Scenario four does the same as scenario three, except that there was an opinion asked of the county attorney's office whether you could do supplemental pay for the attorneys and for the percentage deputies. And so if you would do that, the tax askings would be reduced by 161,861. But the only two people that would not receive a raise under that percentage is the treasurer and the auditor. They would be the only two full-time employees. And that would be true in scenario three, too. They would be the only two full-time employees that would not get a raise, except for that $5.51. You got plans for that?
Yep.
That's, that's what the scenario are. I'm asking you that you just pass the budget as it is. Take the Compensation Board recommendations. But at the very last least, do scenario two. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Jean Bertrand, Woodbury County Treasurer. I want to thank the board for letting me speak tonight. I know that this has been some challenging few months over the discussion of the budgets. But I want to state that, you know, while I agree that as elected officials, we should be operating in a fiscally conservative manner, there's a difference between low cost and best value. You know, in the construction industry, which is where I have a lot of my private sector experience, when we're doing low bids, you're not necessarily, you may be getting the lowest cost, but you're not necessarily getting the best services or the best product. The cost may be cheap, but again, it's not necessarily the best services or products. I think this, this concept, the same concept should be considered when we're managing the county budgets. Otherwise, we run the risk of lowering taxes and services to the point that it impacts our quality of life that the constituents have come to expect. The Compensation Board has put forth a recommendation that meets our financial responsibilities. Since then, there have been several other options that we've discussed. Auditor Gill just reviewed them. There's two that I believe actually meet the expectations of our, of our community and the dedicated staff. Option one, which is the recommendation that was submitted by the Compensation Board, provides the necessary wages to actually retain top-quality staff that is critical to us maintaining the level of services that we need to remain competitive in community lifestyle and economic growth. And still, this allows us to lower our tax offering from last year. Option two is another viable option. And it does actually allow the board to have taken more conservative, fiscally conservative approach and still allows us retention of quality staff. This option not only lowers the tax action from, asking from last fiscal year, but also from the current asking that we put forth, unless I'm misspeaking from what I understand from Dennis. Option three and option four, I think option three is the most fiscally conservative. But I think that this one runs too high of a risk in lowering our services to a point that the impact to the assets that benefit our quality of life is detrimental to county operations. Once we cross that line, it's going to be both difficult and costly to actually regain those services back to our community members. And this is what's going to attract, attract and retain our citizens and our businesses. Option four, I think just muddies the waters. Although I appreciate the efforts provided, to be able to provide the appointed deputies at the treasurer's department with supplemental pay, I think this offers more confusion than helps. There is too great of an impact to the relationship between the deputy and the elected official, which is critical for our daily operations of our departments. The role of the supervisors is not an easy one. I think that the Compensation Board's recommendation clearly highlights that we as a, as a county have been losing ground in an effort to be fiscally conservative. Public safety is always a top priority within our community. It's clear that Woodbury County has been falling behind on some of these things, not only just in our sheriff's department, but also in our county attorney's office. I think it could also be said about the supervisors, although you guys had the option to actually segregate your wage increases from the rest of the county officials. I think that it's pretty clear when you look at the data.
Excuse me, could the person on the phone, please mute their phone? We can hear some feedback.
I think that the sheriff's department and the county attorney's office is of the two most critical departments in maintaining our safe communities. I think the differences between the four options is actually relatively small. In the grand scheme of things, when we're looking at our budgets, when you start comparing those four options, it's very, very small difference between each one of them. Since option one is actually part of our budget, I think that the impact to our communities isn't measurable if we start losing our top-quality services. isn't measurable if we start losing our top-quality services. The board has a lot to be proud of, with some of the difficult decisions that you've made over the last couple of years. And I think that, you know, our focus as elected officials should be on, should be able to balance our fiscal responsibilities with maintaining our high levels of service. And this, these should not be done at the expense of one another. This is a conversation I actually have in my office all the time about what we offer for community service and, and the customer service that we provide our community and the financial responsibilities that we have, and we are constantly trying to balance these things. Based on that, I think that option one and two actually meets our expectations, and those should be the only two, two items that should be considered when we're looking at passing our budget today. Thank you again for your consideration.
Maria, would you like to speak on the phone?
Yes.
Keep her to three minutes for us.
Did I send you a text a while ago to open the contract? I think that the board needs to consider to open the contract and start negotiations. It's scenario two and three that you can bargain on, but I agree, the compensation to public safety, it must be our priority. So, open the contract and start negotiations. So, I support two and three, but it's up to you guys to, whether or not you want to open, open the contract. So, this is my, my recommendations to you all. That's up to you, but I, I support to open the contract again.
All right, well, thank you for your call.
You are welcome. Bye.
Bye. Go ahead.
Tristan Vander Schaaf, 5800 Sunnybrook Plaza, Woodbury County Board of Supervisors. On behalf of the Woodbury County Deputy Sheriffs and Civilian Officers Union, we would like to express our full endorsement and support of the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors passing of the fiscal year 2023 budget as set. This includes the Compensation Board's recommendation salaries for elected officials in Woodbury County. In previous meetings, board members have expressed their concerns about approving raises for elected officials at higher rates than those received by unions. After reviewing comparable salaries to other counties and considering how grossly underpaid our sheriff of Woodbury County is and his percentage of sheriff deputies are, we as a union strongly support you approving the Compensation Board recommendations to bring the sheriff's pay up to the reasonable rate in comparison with other surrounding counties. This raise is going to have no effect on taxpayers of Woodbury County. When you look at the comparable salaries of other county sheriffs, there's absolutely no reason why an explanation, explanation is needed or why debate should even occur regarding the matter at hand. Why is it that Woodbury County is so far behind? Just take a second to think about that. The numbers are clear, they don't lie. It only goes to show that the sheriff's salary, as well as other hourly workers' pays of Woodbury County, have been overlooked for many years and continue to be overlooked. Let's put an end to this now. You have positioned the county financially to approve this raise, so please, we ask that you do so. Sheriff Sheehan continues to represent the Woodbury County Sheriff's Office well. Since being sworn in and taking oath, Sheriff Sheehan continues to stay committed to not only his employees, but to the citizens of Woodbury County. If the union did not think that this was fair, an endorsement letter would not be, would not have been brought to the podium tonight. I'm asking you, the board members, on behalf of the Woodbury County Deputy Sheriffs and Civilian Officers Union, that tonight, we will make the change by increasing the low wage that has been far overlooked for many years. Instead of kicking the can down the road like other previous boards before you, let's make the change now while we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
PJ James County Attorney's Office, I'm not going to echo everything that everybody has said before. I basically want to thank those guys for including me in the in-depth analysis that they were doing, including Pat Gill, as well as the sheriff and everybody else. I, I don't think I've ever felt so important here in county attorney mention. But more so, I would just want to express that today is the National Vietnam War Veterans Day, March 29th. And so that's really what I want to do, is to honor those folks that served in that war, that included my uncle, Eddie Adolphus Jennings. And though he was one of the lucky ones that returned, that was really just in the physical sense. So, thank you.
Thank you. So personally, I was never going to support the percentages where they were. I said that upfront, that I would only support at least a 50% reduction. A lot of the numbers that are thrown around, too, don't include the fact of economic numbers, which is what the board is to consider. Woodbury County ranks 73rd out of 99 counties in median wage. And that is why Woodbury County's wages have always lagged behind some others and Sioux Counties and the top 10 of counties in the, in the state of Iowa. It's hard to compare, but that is what we're stuck with in our position, and that's where I'm coming from. Anyone else to be heard? Go ahead.
I remember sitting here and the goal was to keep the levy flat at best. When I was chairman last year, I asked Dennis to plug in those numbers, and he did as I asked. And it's more than obvious that we've come back with numbers that match, in fact, reduce the stated goal that's been stated many times going into this tough financial year. And I don't see a reason to, to cut this. We've had one supervisor say, oh, this is the biggest raise in the history of Woodbury County. Well, I say to that, we've got some of the most embarrassingly low salaries in the state of Iowa. So rightly so. It would be the biggest raise in the history of Woodbury County. I apologize because it appears that this board is doing nothing more than continuing to kick the can down the road by even discussing cutting the wage plan, to even cutting the salary cuts that we're, we're sitting here looking at. We've condemned boards of the past for kicking the can down the road. Secondary roads, the LEC, various other departments, other, other jobs, other prospects, other headaches staring at us. But here we are once again, looking like we're going to enable something that we've been condemning for the years that I've been on this board and what I've heard other county supervisors say that we need to stop doing. This makes no sense. Personally, I don't want to lose over 130 years of experience in the sheriff's office, It's just a perennial problem, and I'm, I'm tired of being a part of that. I, I don't understand why we're even discussing. Option four is completely off the table for me. Option three makes no sense. I would hold my nose and vote for option two, but since we have met the goals that were stated from the beginning, I see no other reason to avoid option one.
We did a lot of hard work, I feel like, this session against some of the suggestions that I believe would have increased taxes by over $2 million. Some of those were to increase the wages across the board for every union, to reopen every union contract, that would have resulted in $2 to $3 million in tax increases, but we said no. And we held the line, and we were castigated, a lot of us, for it, for doing that, for being where we're at right now. But in saying no to some of those folks, now we're being asked to say yes to certain individuals, elected officials. And so for that reason, the board, I know the previous year before we got on, was at 0 percent. And I'm sure inflation was higher than that at that time. And that's when, I think, Auditor Gill came forward with longevity pay to be able to treat percentage deputies differently, as we're considering potentially doing tonight. To me, it's an issue of fundamental fairness when we have said no to nearly 400 employees because we knew, even when certain elected officials were saying, open up every union contract that there is, knowing that would be a massive tax increase. Now we've done the hard work to be where we're at right now, and yes, it's in the budget because it has to be in the budget to start with. But to me, it's an issue of fundamental fairness, and I cannot see when people are between 2 and 1/4 and 4% raises along the lines of 9, 13, 22, and 31%. And taxpayers and the people that I talk to out there say, I don't know what world you guys are operating in, when you would treat these people that differently than those who are your rank-and-file workers. For that reason, I can't be supportive of those increases. I don't know a board in the past that has been, but I think being at a bottom of 4% when all of our other employees are at the top at 4% says a lot. So, I'm supportive of the lowest elected official making more than any of our other employees, and I think that compensation is fair. I think even with that, I would put our sheriff making more than the governor of the state of Iowa, or county attorney, more than the attorney general of the state of Iowa. So for that reason, I can't support the comp board recommendation, I think it's an unfair system.
Well, Chairman Raddick made a comment, it's hard to compare, and I think that's certainly true of all the thought that we're putting into all this, it's hard to look at apples to apples for a lot of different reasons. And due to the law regarding the comp board recommendations, no matter what we do, there are going to be outliers on the high or the low end. So we can target 4% or 7%, but whether that's the mid, the minimum, the maximum, the average, there's going to be outliers just because of how this is presented to us and how we legally have to act. So I don't want that to be lost. That's a challenge that we're dealing with. And I think that's also why, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no, there's no member of the comp board here tonight to speak. It's not an easy job. And Dennis, if you get elected, that clapping goes away.
I'll keep clapping for you guys.
There you go. When, when the topic came to wage plan, I, I looked at inflation being over 7%, and I supported 7%, but the board went forward with 4, and that's the reality that we're At that, previously, I remember the county attorney stating he couldn't in good conscience ask for the full recommendation if his, if the wage plan didn't get the maximum, and unfortunately, in my mind, given where, where at economically, they didn't. But that statement makes sense because it's, it's a fair statement. Also previously, Auditor Gill pitched, I think it's scenario two, with the 11.11% across-the-board cut, to attempt to be fair with the percentage deputies being at 4% as, at a minimum. And obviously, we're dealing with the issues with the 27 pay periods. This is a, a unique limitation that we have, and I think it, I think it needs to be permanently addressed rather than a one-time allowance or a bonus or anything like that presented by scenario four. I believe that, again, given where the board landed, I do appreciate the intellectual consistency in scenario two. I believe it is as fair as humanly possible. I don't think the budget itself really enters into the discussion because the amount of money we're talking about, the size of the budget, I don't think we're, I don't think, you know, making this argument about, you know, obviously, reducing is going to happen either way. So, what I look at when I see option one is, is similar to when I proposed hire for wage plan and didn't get it. Option one, in this case, would, would bring in issues of fairness as well. We talked about the relationship between elected officials and their percentage deputies. This would exacerbate the fairness issue between those people and non-deputy wage plan employees that I don't like to see. So that's why I say it's as fair in my mind as humanly possible, given the cards that the board has been dealt. And obviously, there are, we could propose any percentage and vote on any percentage, but I think this one is still being considered by us today as an option because it makes some intellectual sense to at least respect what the board did for wage plan and not lose sight of the fact that the percentage deputies do, there should not be any percentage deputies in my mind that do not see the same treatment as, as those that they supervise. And so for that reason, I will be supportive of option two.
I think we've found ourselves in this situation where we've been able to make a considerable investment in public safety through the, what we were doing with, with the jail facility. We're making an investment in people and in infrastructure, and we're doing that while still lowering the levy. And that has only been made possible through several years now of, of management that errs on the side of being measured and cautious in the, in the decision-making. And Sheriff Sheehan asked the question, why, why deviate from the proposed plan of Compensation Board? My, my question in response to that is, why deviate from an approach that has led us to where we are, where we can, we can provide astronomical wages, excuse me, astronomical wage increases for, for people, that wouldn't have been possible without really difficult decisions that have been made over the past eight to 10 years? And I, I don't see the wisdom in getting off of, of that path, because there are difficulties, there are difficult decisions in front of us. We don't know what's going to happen to inflation. You don't, we don't know if we're going to be able to hire the 15 folks that you're going to need to hire to, to run the facility. We, I, I know people are, people are, are describing the savings associated with plans one and two as being, as being pennies. But those, those pennies, what if we need sign-on bonuses to attract people to these positions here in a few months? Those pennies are meaningful then, because we, we spent a little less now, so we keep a little bit more in the coffers in case, in case the situation gets, gets more challenging. I think we, I think we stand prepared. We, we made a decision this year to use our funds as a supplement to deal with inflation. I don't know what's, what's going to happen next year, but I, I think this, this board has shown a willingness to, to go to that, that bucket again next year if, if inflation gets further out of, out of control. This is not all about Sheriff Sheehan, but Sheriff Sheehan makes $118,000. Sheriff Sheehan makes $118,000. If we give him a 15% raise, then he's going to make $140,000. How is that an embarrassing compensation? How is that embarrassing compensation? I've, I've talked to a few people over the course of the last couple of weeks, and when I suggest to them that, that we have people in this room that are, that have been scoffing at six-figure salaries, that, that is a, a perspective that they, that many people that I've spoken with is completely foreign to them. I, I think, I don't think this discussion needs to, to end here. I would like to see us spend some time here over the next several minutes pursuing an Option 2.5. I'm prepared to support, I'm prepared to support compensation increases that are, at minimum, twice, twice the historical 20-year average. And for some people, it's, it's far more than twice that much. And again, it comes back to, it, it's, it's been interesting, the conversations that I've, that I've had with some individuals here over the last couple of days because in those discussions, the, the idea of, of just the effective management has come up a lot. And there's been a lot of, Dennis, it wasn't sarcasm, my, my standing to applaud him because Dennis Butler does an outstanding job. And without the job that he does, we, we wouldn't be in the position that we're in right now. It wasn't sarcasm, it wasn't, I mean, you do, you do an excellent job. But in those discussions, no one advocated for, okay, we can, we can do this, and this is great that we can do this, and we can do this because of how we've been spending money over the last eight to 10 years. But nobody, nobody that I've sat down with over the last couple of days thought to ask the question of, okay, so then have we been taking too much? If we're in a position to take on the, the type of, of, of decision that we're, we're prepared to take on here with salary increases at 6%, at, at 8%, at 9%, wherever we land, if, if we're prepared to do that, nobody thought to ask, well, are we taking too much then? And with all due respect, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't set out to keep the levy low for a year. I want to keep the levy low forever around here. The levy's going to need to remain low forever because assessed values are going up. And so it's, it's not a, a one-year decision that I'm making in regard to this issue. It's, I want to do my part here in the last meaningful, real meaningful decision that I'm going to make to, to stay the course of the people that, that I respected, who have put us in the position that we're in to, to, to make a potentially, I mean, it's, it's, it's unfathomable to me that, that we can lower the levy while making an investment in a $52 million facility for, for the sheriff's department, and we're going to be able to, to give raises that, that have not been seen before? Those, those are amazing, those are amazing accomplishments, and they're only, they're only possibly because of what's been done for the last number of years. And again, finally, I just don't see a reason why we get off this track now because there are more big decisions coming.
If you can keep the response short.
Sure. I'm just going to answer a few questions. Why deviate from the approach? Because eventually, there'll be nobody in the offices. You'll have no people here to work. And without the people here to work, the county government's not going to run. It, it requires people to get the job done. So that's one reason to deviate from the approach for one year because you can, you can deviate one year and accomplish everything that you set out to accomplish because of where we're at. The $140,000, how is it an embarrassment? It's not that that's an embarrassment. Nobody's going to argue that that's an embarrassment. But when you compare it to what other people who, who are doing the same work in similar-sized organizations, it's not comparable. What I used to always tell when I'd work the street and people would, you know, say, "What great benefits you have and the pay is good." Put your name on the ballot. Come apply for the sheriff's office. See, most people won't risk it because these guys risk it all every day. So it's not, so that, it's, it's frustrating, and I get emotional because they risk it all every day. And most people won't put the skin in the game, but then they'll complain because they think somebody else has it better than them. It's not rocket science. You can apply here or at the city or wherever you want. You can put, you know, if you can pass everything, you can put the uniform on and risk it all every day, and, and you can make what everybody else is making. Hiring the 15 to 20 COs, you're correct, it's going to be very difficult, especially the wages, the way they are right now. It's going to be difficult. I will say the one thing, and I didn't, I didn't bring it up earlier, the one advantage to, to ripping the Band-Aid off now and getting everybody where they're at is there are no union contracts this, this fiscal year, but they will start next year. And that's going to add difficulty moving down the road. Opening the contracts is, was, that, that was me that, that brought it up. I brought that up to try and prove a point that in the real world, not the government world, but in the real world, in private business, the real world, people would rather, at least in my experience dealing with business owners, they want to deal with what they know and, and not try to guess down the road. So that was the point of bringing that up that, that, that evening. And you say that it would have cost two or $3 million. Absolutely, it wouldn't have because you guys wouldn't have, you wouldn't have negotiated a contract any more than 4%. You would have been set at 4%. It wouldn't have cost one dime more than you already did. And I commend you for giving them what you gave them. I think it was a great thing. But that's a little disingenuous. It wouldn't have cost any more only if you approved it, and you wouldn't have approved it. And I wouldn't have expected you to. It was a challenge to, at least if we know what we're dealing with now, we don't have to play the crystal ball. You can go back and review the, the, the video. And the fair, if you want to talk about fair, look at the 20-year comparison. It's fair. It's what it is. The numbers don't lie. I mean, they don't lie. The 20-year comparisons don't lie. You have the money, do it.
I'm going to go ahead and move Option 4 on this.
We have to close the public hearing.
Okay. I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. Any discussion from the board? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
No. Oh, sorry, aye for the closing of the public hearing.
Okay, so passes 5-0. All right. So I'm going to move Option 4, which was the supplemental with the reduction.
Supplemental for the deputies?
Yes.
I'll second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor.
Can we roll call both, please?
Well, I think we would do it anyway.
Before you do that, I'd like to speak on that, please.
Sure thing.
Option 4 is the one for supplemental pay for the deputies, correct? I'm not going to accept that, and I'm going to fight that for the same reason I talked about, the, the opposition to the House file that would do away with the Compensation Board. And I'm going to prevent that from happening for my deputies to take it simply for that reason. You have a county attorney's opinion that says that it could be argued that you could do it and you do it supplemental, but that would be without precedent because we, you have never given money without supplemental pay to a deputy without an elected official bringing that to you. And we have the ability, and I do, my elected, if my deputies try to accept that, I'm going to revoke their appointment. I'm not going to accept that. For that reason is because they are my deputies, and it doesn't make sense to me that they should be beholden to the Board of Supervisors. They are my deputies, and that's what you are proposing.
May I speak, Mr.?
Go ahead.
I ask the question of our Assistant County Attorney because in an email, Mr. Gill, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I do not want to mischaracterize, but said something along the lines of subverting the recommendation of the compensation. I knew that when it was refigured during the 27 pay period for elected officials, that it would change the annual base compensation as a percentage for the elected officials. In other words, it wouldn't be merely 4%, it would be something greater than that. I ask the question of our Assistant County Attorney. I don't want to put words in his mouth, and so maybe he can speak, but he cited the precedent of Mr. Gill advocating when 0%, remember, 2014, 0% was wage plan. 0% was all elected officials. That's before any of us were on the board. My understanding was Mr. Gill came forward and advocated for longevity pay, something that was outside. And what I'm now understanding is that, would it be your desire that we do not treat them differently and put them in a position where they're not able to have that benefit?
As I said, it would be out, without precedent. And I was the one that brought it forward when they were treated to a 0% increase. I'm not, I'm not backing up to this. The position that I have as the auditor deserves the pay that the Compensation Board asked for. Believe me, the amount of time that I've spent just the redistricting process this year was just unbelievable. And I am not ashamed to advocate for what the Compensation Board did. But for you to sing a Option 4 is very unfair because what it does is singles out the treasurer and myself as the only two full-time employees that don't see a raise until July 1st of 2023.
I'd like to ask for our Assistant County Attorney to weigh in because I think it's Does it matter if it's Mr. Gill making a request on behalf of his percentage deputies or the Board of Supervisors trying to treat them fairly?
Well, beyond the issue of whether it's a good idea or not, the question that I was asked was in regards to can it be done or, or is supplemental pay an option? And that's the question that I addressed in the memo. The statute in relation to the, how the, the percentage deputies' pay is calculated states that the elected official sets their base salary at an amount that can't exceed the 85%. And then later references that the base salary does not include the fringe benefits, supplemental pay, longevity pay. There's no reference in the statute to the elected official setting those additional items of pay. And so my, my view is that the statute, the correct or interpretation of the statute would be that the board sets those additional items. And previously, when, when the board did enact the longevity pay program that mine understand is, is still in effect, that was brought before the board. It was put forward by PAT, but ultimately, the board were the ones that determined whether to do that or not. So beyond whether it's a good idea or not, I think that ultimately, the decision rests with the board on the items that are beyond the base salary.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak there.
I was just going to kind of echo some of the comments that Auditor Gill made is at some point, you know, longevity pay is something that we, as the elected officials, play a role in. And so the supplemental pay is something that, you know, I suppose if the board is allowed to do it, you can make that decision, but it does actually have an impact on the relationship that we have with our deputies. And they do, you know, I hate to say it in a harsh way, but they do work for the elected official, and they work at our pleasure. So if Auditor Gill wants to, you know, stop and say that his deputies shouldn't be taking it, or, you know, that that's going to be his, his prerogative, it would be my prerogative as well to make the same statement. And that's not a position that I want my deputies in. I don't want to be in a position where we're going to be arguing over something or have it come across that I'm not considering enough of their wages when, in fact, I am trying to be considering their wages. I stepped forth tonight to say that Option 1 and Option 2, the two options that we should be considering right now, those, both of those options would take care of the deputies in the same fashion that you're wanting to take care of them without muddying the waters. A supplemental pay would be a one-time only fix. And what happens next year when we're going to be right back here having the same kind of conversations? I would rather have it a more, a cleaner process. But the only other thing is, you know, we're talking about veering off of some of the hard work that, you know, Supervisor Wright was talking about. I'm still a little confused as to how we're veering off by selecting Option 1 or 2. I mean, you're still making the hard decisions, and you're still making, the budgets are still actually reducing the tax rate. So how, by approving them, are we veering away from what you've, the hard work that you've been doing over these last four, five, eight years or whatever it is?
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
Because however small the gains, there's, there are still some monies to be gained here, however small.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Make a comment? I, sorry, did I take you?
No, go ahead. Winger didn't hear me. So my response is, is that however small these savings may amount to, they're still savings. They're still savings that may be meaningful nine months from now. We might, we might want those monies. We have, again, we have no idea how bad inflation may, may get. The, the other thing I didn't mention earlier is by utilizing supplemental pay in this way, we have to go into, to, to labor negotiations next year, and then more negotiations are coming up, up two years after that. And by maintaining base pays, but by not allowing base pays to grow by some of the, the numbers that are being kind of considered, I think, I think it puts us in a much more competitive bargaining position when we have to renegotiate those contracts.
Okay, so when you renegotiate those contracts and they have step wages, because I know in my office, okay, in the Treasurer's Department, I have several people who have had raises over the last year or so, and they're substantial. I have five this year who are going to get 11% increase.
Your raises this year are going to be substantial, at least twice as high as the historical average.
But 11% is above and beyond.
Excuse me, we haven't finished our, our discussions yet. I wish we could vote. Can we?
Well, I, I just want to make one comment, if I may. For years, I've heard that it's all about the percentage deputies when advocating, and we're trying to do the greatest amount of good for the greatest amount of people. It's hard for me to understand when we're, we're essentially giving 4% for two elected officials. It is the lowest of the percentages. That's the way the comp board and this thing works. You're going from roughly $96,000 to $100,000. We are trying to do something that happens one time every 11 years. It won't happen next year. It's 27 pay period goofiness. Is that a fair statement? Doesn't happen every year. We can't do something, and I even asked this question of the county, Assistant County Attorney, can we do something that doesn't affect your annual base percentage and go up to 7.65% or whatever it is? We can't. We've got to change that as a percentage. Can we do something that gets to the heart of what we're always told it's all about, which is the percentage of deputies? And now we're hearing, if we do do that, we're going to reject those percentage deputies, that there's going to be contention in those offices, that they're going to feel like they don't have longevity in the offices. To me, that's a travesty. I don't get it. I don't. We're, we're looking at 4 to 14% for people who are making between $100 and $150, some thousand dollars. I talked to Becca Socknet, and I asked her if I could use this, by the way, and she has put on a uniform, and she has has put on a uniform, and she has put herself in harm's way. And I said, you know what, you're only at 2.75 percent. Can you go back to emergency management, or maybe we could do this one-time bonus? You know what, she said 2.75, I'm good. I'm good. Maybe they can do something the same for me on the 27 pay period, but you know what, I have a budget, I know what it's like to not have money for three or four or five months being in the military. She's making about half of what y'all are making, what we're talking about. I don't, I don't get it.
Well, Mr. Taylor, it sounds like you want to do a one-time thing for the deputies, but what is consistent is you want to make sure that annually, over and over, we make sure that our electeds are underpaid.
See, I don't see 155,000 or 140,000.
Well, I'm sure you don't.
Yeah, I don't. I don't see them making more than the governor of the state of Iowa.
So you're going against a law that came in.
It's not going against the law, it's our.
If you're not supporting it.
I'm, I'm not supporting.
How are you supporting, how are you supporting it?
Because the Compensation Board has.
Do you have the responsibility that that man does right there?
No, I know.
No, you don't.
I didn't run for the office knowing it would be 180 either.
This isn't going to be effective in, in moving anybody's decision-making, and quite frankly, I think we all stated our support behind legal terms in Iowa code, i.e., we have.
Then can we move to the roll call vote, please?
PJ, what you like?
I'm here.
I, I just want to say, and I don't want to get into that argument stuff, but a couple things. When we talked about the employee, and I don't want to mention names because I won't put anybody on the spot, but am I not correct in saying that that employee also gets overtime? I take overtime with no increase. For all the hours I put in, give me overtime. I won't take that increase. And I think everybody else here, elected official would do the same. But the argument is not the percentages and all that when it comes to option four, it's the fact that it appears as though with that option, the Board is taking that control from the elected officials. That's the issue. You shouldn't be doing that.
So you would rather have option three?
I don't, I'm not arguing for options right now. I'm just arguing.
Which is where I'm tempted to go, but.
As far as we've argued for our deputies all these years, that's not the argument. It shouldn't be your control to do that, it's the elected official's control to do that.
I'll rescind my motion.
We also have someone on the phone, it sounds like.
You want to rescind your second?
I'll rescind my second.
I'll move option three. You want, I moved option three.
Is the person on the phone, do they want to talk?
Yes, yes, I do.
Well, you can when recognized, I have a motion on the floor, I don't know if we have a second.
I think we closed the public hearing, haven't we?
Yeah, we did, but. Anyone want a second, option three?
Mr. Chairman?
Just a minute, Bill.
I'm not going to do that because I think it's going to punish the deputies, and as much as I, I'm not going to take the bait. And so I'm going to do the greatest amount of good for the greatest amount of people, and I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do what these elected officials are asking. I really think it's bull. They're asking to rescind doing one-time supplemental pay for the percentage deputies. I'm not going to do it.
Just so I'm clear, did we, did we have a motion, a second on three?
We have no motion on the floor.
There is a motion on the floor to rescind the percentage deputies getting supplemental pay.
So that's, so option four is still on the table?
No, I rescinded that motion.
Sorry, I'm just confused.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, William Burrows, 4409 47th Street. First of all, I'd like to thank PJ Jennings for recognizing my comrades in arms in Vietnam today. Second of all, I'd like to supervise around, I'm kind of confused as to where we're at right now. I think we're on 12B, 12B on the, on the agenda?
Yeah, basically.
Okay, so I don't, I haven't been able to find anything published on these options. So how?
Is it not in the backup material?
View the, what these options are. They're not, they're not in the, on the agenda, but perhaps they're on a previous minutes of a previous meeting? Can you help me out on that, please?
That's what's included, Bill, this rocky on our backup material, and probably for brevity and to avoid some confusion, which we haven't, we don't post the backup materials, which is all the details and minutia that, that we get to study on a weekly basis.
It was brought to the Board previously, I don't know if it was received into the, into the minutes or not.
No.
I, I would, in that case, I would recommend that those be published in some way so that the general public could look at the options.
Could we move to receive Mr. Gill's email to the Board that laid out all four options? Is that possible, Pat?
Yes.
I would move to receive.
Second, motion by Taylor, second by Raddick to receive the email for the record. Any discussion from the Board? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes five to zero.
Good, so where, where would they appear then?
Uh, well, they'll appear in, what would it be, our minutes or?
Yes, in the minutes.
Minutes next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Go ahead, there, Chair.
I just, I would just second what County Attorney Jennings said about the, the appearance of subverting that relationship between, between the deputies and, and the elected official, and the importance of having that autonomy. I think, I think the check and the balance and everything that's there, I think, is important, but I don't want to beat a dead horse to death. We all applauded the guy sitting at the table here. I'm curious to know, Dennis, what, what do you recommend is the most fiscally responsible thing for the county to do moving forward, considering what the comp board would be looking at next year, increasing, or having more union contracts into the future that aren't present during this budget that we're looking at? The effect of lowering too much? You know, we all applauded you, so I'm curious to know what your thought is.
There's a few issues here, depends what they pass. If they pass number four, what do we do with the extra 187,000? Do we reduce taxes and reduce our base again? Do we put this in reserves? You know, what are we going to do with this money? Secondly, my, my recommendation is, we did 20, we made up 30 years of gravel projects because the previous boards didn't have the nerve to go out and spend the money, just budget 300,000, inflation ate it up. Second, you know, and I told Justin this too, we met yesterday, I favor number two. The reason why, why do we keep kicking this can down? We're going to have the same scenario next year, and with inflation added on top of this. So if we only do, say, half of it or do 4 percent, they're going to be right back here next year, and then it's going to be worse because you're going to have to add anywhere from 5 to 10 percent more for inflation. So that's why I'd say, we got to quit kicking the can down, we fiscally can do it, and for future years, we can pay for it. So we're going to have increased, you know, tax base, we're going to have revenue coming in from the jail, offset taxes, our goal's 4 million. Obviously, we aren't going to burn up to 4 million in one year, it may take 10, 20 years to burn it up, but we're going to have this tax base increase every year. But all we're doing is putting a half, a Band-Aid on it till next year, and we're going to be, you won't be here, Justin, but the other four will probably be here, we're going to have the same thing next year again, and it's going to be worse because inflation is just going out of sight. So why not tackle the problem and get it done now? And I'm not saying 100 percent, number one, number two, at least we made 89 percent progress toward the end goal, that's going to come right back and hit us again next year.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
So option four saves us $187,000, Dennis?
It's 161,000. But with option four, and I talked to the county attorney a little bit here, you can't just include elected deputies and the auditor and treasurer, I think you have to include the sheriff deputies also in this, is that correct? You can include the county attorney's assistant because there's a special section of code, you can't do it.
My question is, on option four, as opposed to option one, we're saving 100 and what?
1,000.
Three saves us more, though.
The what?
Option three saves 180 and change thereabout, I believe. Correct?
Because you're eliminating the stand, or the supplemental pay for the deputies. Option four includes the supplemental.
No, I'm not supporting option four.
But it sounds like we're sitting here in divorce court arguing over who gets the Correll dinnerware.
I'm supporting option 2.5. I want us to, I want us to, to bring Tina and Pat's raise to 6 percent, and everybody else falls in line according to that.
So that would be a 33 percent reduction?
Yes, I already left 6 percent in the nine, that's 66 percent, so you're reducing by 34 percent.
And then from there, I think, I think we need to get over this idea that, that we can't, we can't take care of some needs right now that are, that have been brought on us through inflation, COVID, you name it, everything else that's happened over the last 18 months, we got to get over this idea that, that we're trying to buy people's loyalty, we're trying to meet needs right now. So I, I think we need to, to, to reserve that as an option, I don't know if it's, I don't think I'm going to make it as, if, if anybody makes a motion on that, I don't know that that's wise at this point, but I think we need to keep talking about that. We need to get over this idea that, that we're, that we're trying to undermine the authority of the elected officials when all we're trying to do is, is take care of people's financial needs here with so much uncertainty.
Now, now, if you did go 6 percent, you'd have to take 6 percent times our rate of pay at June, and then we'll figure it out from there.
Well, that's, that, no, you don't have to do that.
You're saying that's an option to do that.
That's what we're doing for everybody.
But that's an option for the Board.
If we reduce it 33 percent.
I want to be clear, these are options. I don't want to, this is what you have to do, it's not what we have to do.
No.
So. Because that's going to change, and this is the rub, this is the secret, don't tell anybody, but that's going to change the percentage drastically. It ain't 6 percent anymore, right? If you calculate it on a 27 pay period, which only happens once every 11 years, it ain't 6 percent, it's north of 9.
So that'd actually be an increase of.
That's the problem.
It is for the 27 pay periods because these people have earned that over 11 years of not getting to pay like our little people do.
I, I get that that's the opinion, and I appreciate it, I do. But you set that for the next year, that 9 percent is, becomes the base for the next year.
Not really, because you're going to 20, if you do it by pay period, by pay period, it won't, it'll reverse.
You can't do that. Joshua, you have to figure for an elected, this is the problem, you have to figure an actual percentage for the annual base pay. You can't just say, well, we did it one time this way, isn't that correct?
Right.
You can't say it's 6 percent for a 27 pay period when you're actually in that course of the year getting more like 9.2 percent. You have to pass it as 9.2 percent, and that will calculate the next year, you can't go back down.
Yeah, I mean, there, whatever rationale you have for how you set that base pay, that base pay is a dollar figure, and that's the dollar figure that you start with for the next year.
So that's 6 percent, just so everybody knows, this is more like 9. Right.
Which is almost the rate of inflation right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, God forbid.
I'm not suggesting a 6 percent on a bi-weekly basis.
Well, that's how it was interpreted.
That's not how I meant it.
Right, no, I got you.
I'm, I'm thinking that's, that's approximately $5,000 raise for Tina and for Pat, which is, which is significant. You know, both of you know how to manage your finances, that's a significant raise. Okay? The bi-weekly argument doesn't carry a whole lot of weight with me, not when we're talking about.
The, the bi-weekly argument carries very little weight with me because we're talking about people who are very intelligent and already well compensated. Okay? You're going to be getting a $5,000 raise. How many people in the private sector wouldn't sign up for that? Pardon?
Who? They've all run for these positions, they don't have to, just come this, next time if it's too low. They were known.
Well, I set my bar at 50 percent, I don't know if anyone else has a motion where they're going to set their bar, but.
I just have to say this and get it off my chest, I'm Diane Swoboda Peterson, I'm the Deputy Recorder for Pat Gill. This is my 25th year here. I have never, ever, in all of my life, I work very hard, I work harder at this job than I've worked at any other job, and I have never had to grovel to get a damn raise. And every year, this happens, every year, this happens. In the years we had, we had 0 percent, and more than just one, sir, and I am very fiscally responsible with my money. My husband's a teacher, so I know you can understand that. I work very hard, and I hate this every year coming up here, actually trying to beg you people to give us a raise, when the, the Wage Plan employees and the union people, they show up, they get a raise, they don't have to come and beg you folks for it, they automatically get one. But we have to, and I think it's five or six years, it was a 0 percent raise, and I kept working just as hard as well as the other deputies did too. I had to get it off my, I can't sit back there anymore and not say this.
Again, a 4, a 50 percent reduction is still a 4 and 1/2 percent raise on the lowest percentage.
So where are we at, Mr. Chair?
Uh, waiting for a motion. I said where I'd be, and you guys, we got to get three votes somehow, so. I would support a 50 percent reduction.
With or without supplemental pay?
Without supplemental pay. I don't even want to have that.
I'll move option four again, if anyone will support it. Supplemental pay for the deputies, it's the greatest amount of good for the greatest amount of people, in fairness.
Can I just make one more comment? In terms of the raise to elected officials, by the rate, yeah, yes. I apply for the position, I'll run for reelection, our election, but the deputies, they don't do that. So when they talk about where are they, sometimes it's the deputy level position, not necessarily the elected position. Okay? So sometimes it is about where are they going to be? And our relationship with the deputies is very, very important. So, yeah, all we want to do is be able to maintain those relationships.
So I've moved option four, if anybody wants to say.
If you're not going to second, the motion dies. You have to announce that.
Okay, if I have a second, the motion dies. Go ahead.
I would, I would move an option that includes a 15 percent reduction from the comp board's recommendation, 15, one point, or 15 percent, 15 percent reduction.
Why 15 exactly?
Frankly, I, I completely support option one, it's met the goals, as I stated before. But it seems like we're going to be here till midnight arguing about literally pennies, so I'm trying to get some movement, Matthew.
You said you would support 11.
I'm sorry?
Didn't you say you would support 11? 11 percent, 11 point, 11 percent decrease?
I don't recall if I said that. Option two, well, in lieu of, in lieu of option two, I, I just, I support option one, I pull my motion. I'm just kind of tired of sitting here, like I said, bickering over pennies. Let's get something going.
I'll move a 50 percent reduction if anyone else wants to support that. So 6 and 1/2, 4 and 1/2, like 15 and 1/2, and 4 and 1/2. It's still higher than wage plan, and it's still higher than most other.
If I may, I had the opportunity to speak to Governor Reynolds last week or the week before when she was in Sioux City. There is, in her opinion, well, she doesn't support changing the comp board language. I, I specifically had about five minutes one-on-one with her. So what I would say is that reducing it 50%, we will be back here next year and if the comp board follows the law again, we'll be asking for 25% again, or 20%.
We're back here every year.
I get it. Right. But again, you have the opportunity to fix it.
And be back here next year again when it's not enough.
Well, you just got done, Sam, we're gonna be back here again next year anyway.
Every single year.
The law, then if it's caught up, then next year following the law means that whatever the cost of living is, and those are the comparables, that's what it would be. So once it gets caught up, it's probably gonna be that typical 3% to 4% to 5%.
But again.
Again, I go back to the fairness. Everybody talks about fairness. Just look at the 20-year comparison. The, 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 the truth is, the elected officials have gone down, 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 which means then the percentage deputies go down, 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 down. And if you look at the fairness over the 20 years, the, the, the facts are there. I mean, that, that, that's why the facts are there. And if I, if I may be so bold and I don't wanna interject, but the, a 15% appears to be a, a middle ground between, uh, what you had talked about at 33%. Number one is 0%. A 15% seems to be somewhere in the middle. I still think number one's the best option for all of these people. And people have talked about making donations or whatever and that we're, uh, I'll pledge to donate the money back. Pass number one and I'll take a 0% increase for this year and whatever the difference is in take home, I'll, I'll give it back, uh, to a nonprofit organization. That, if that doesn't prove to you that I, I'm not in it for the money, I'll donate it back. Whatever the difference is, pass number one, give them their raise, whatever the difference is in take home money, I'll write a check to the Make-A-Wish Foundation or Boys and Girls Home or whatever it is. I don't care if it's 20 or $30,000. Whatever it might be, whatever the difference in take home is, I'll write a check.
So I have a motion for 50% on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. So again, that's six and a half, four and a half, 15 and a half, and four and a half percent increase in wage. Six and a half. Uh, that's attorney, four and a half treasurer, 15 and a half sheriff, four and a half auditor.
And all the deputies are the same as the elected officials.
Correct, yep. Everybody's treated.
The desire.
Yep.
But, uh, what is that?
That's the 50% and what the 20-year average would show if.
What is the biweekly percent increase at 50%?
I don't really consider the biweekly. We're supposed to consider the annual.
It's just information.
Sure.
The biweekly amount for the sheriff would be 11.4%. For the treasurer and auditor would be 0.63% and for the, uh, attorney would be 2.56%. For the biweekly after 27 pay period was calculated.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question of Joshua?
Can we do supplemental pay for elected officials?
No, sir. All right. Any other board discussion?
So I call the question, Mr. Chair, and ask for a record.
Roll call vote, please.
The, uh, the motion is for a 50% across-the-board reduction of the compensation schedule. DeWitt?
No.
Taylor?
Aye.
Oh?
Nay.
Wright?
Nay.
Raddick?
Yes. Motion fails, two to three. I'll entertain any other motions from the board.
I'll move scenario two, the 11.11% cut.
Do we have a second? All right, do we have any other motions?
I'll move the 50% with supplemental pay for the deputies.
I don't wanna have the fight with certain deputies not getting it and others.
It's been done in the past. But in respect, if there's no second, I'm just holding my breath.
Any other motions? The supplemental vote, we should end it then.
I'm, I'll move option, uh, option two-ish, 33% reduction. I'm sorry, so crass and crude of your argument. I know it.
So we have a motion for a 33% reduction. Anyone else to second?
What does that put the percentages at?
Would you put that in, Michelle?
Yes, it's there. 33% reduction would give the auditor and treasurer 6.03 fiscal, 2.10 biweekly. Attorney would be 8.71 fiscal, 4.68% biweekly and sheriff would be 21% fiscal, 16.52% biweekly.
Do we have a second? Any other option? Anyway, we're gonna get three votes.
I, I hate to say, but we have to have three votes for some kind of compensation schedule past the budget. So we gotta come to a head here somewhere.
I'll try the auditor and treasurer at 5%. And if they're at 5%, what's the reduction?
Be less of a reduction than 33%.
That's about a 5, 6, a 5, a 5, 5. About 5, 5, 5. Times 0.555.
45%. So how much of a reduction is that?
Uh, it's 45. It's, it's, it's 44.555. So we have a motion by Taylor, second by Wright. Any discussion on this? All right, we'll do a roll call.
DeWitt?
No.
Taylor?
Aye.
Oh?
Nay.
Wright?
And I will say yes to move on, even though I did not wanna approve more than 50. All right, so any other last minute items for the budget, Dennis? Anything that was brought up?
No. The one question I have now, we'll have to figure out how much this will save and the reductions in our budget. The question is, do we reduce our tax rate, which I would be in favor of, or should go reserves?
Well, that's part of what, uh. The planning ahead was, you know, obviously we, we've added, what, 21, 22 new staff members. Obviously, we've had some instances where we've, uh, lost a staff member and will ma- maybe have to rehire and come in at a different wage. So we need that in reserves, in my opinion.
That's the consensus of the board. That's where I'll put it. 150,000, 696.57 into, into reserves. As I go, general basic, general sub, those will be the only two, and a little bit of real basic.
That's a little different. Uh, the motion was for 5%.
Motion 5% doesn't just change that to 5?
I can't change.
It was times 0.44 or 5, or 0.4.
You can't show enough decimals. 4.99994.
That's 4.555.
We can do the math later on, but.
Okay.
5% was the.
As close as you get there, anyway. So I see the option of fiscal 2023 budget and resolution.
I'd move it.
Second. Motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Passes 4 to 1. Moving on to item 14A, emergency budget requests reference air truck filtration system part. Andrew Donohue.
Andrew Donohue, Emergency Services. Um, I contacted the chairman, Matthew and Rocky in reference to a part that went bad on our air truck and, uh, we needed it. So they went ahead and gave me the yes to buy it and I'm just here today to tell y'all pretty much about it. Uh, Dennis was gonna let us know which items we should move around in the budget to grab this part.
Or is it to move from reserves? Is that what we're gonna?
Yes, unless he doesn't spend his whole budget. So we'd probably wait till, you've already bought, you probably already got it cause he had to have the operation of the truck, so what we wanna do is wait till we're gonna amend the budgets in May, see kind of where he's at in his budget. If we have to amend it, if we have to amend it, it'll come from reserves.
All right, so it says action item, but we, what, just move to have it come out of reserves or?
No, just out of his budget and then we'll amend it.
Okay.
He just needs authorization essentially, so it's you're looking for retroactively.
I'll move to authorize the purchase.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes 5 to 0. 14B, purchase of mortuary cart for medical examiner investigation.
Uh, yes, so this is for us to put in the back of the vehicle that we don't have purchased yet, but they're on sale right now, uh, from what Dennis and I looked at. And then one of the funeral homes has a newer one that they bought that they cannot put in their vehicle because it was too long. So that was an option as well and I didn't know if we could use ARPA funds to, to purchase that now or go to the option of the ones that were on sale. Now, last week, we looked when they were on sale. I don't know if they still are, but that's what we had. Dennis?
I would recommend gaming revenues, cause we don't have center and, you know, start spending ARPA 1,500 a year, 1,000 there, or 2,000. Let's just use it for one-time expense. They need to do their investigate, know they're gonna take over transport, they need it.
Move it.
Second, gaming.
From gaming.
Motion by Taylor, second by Raddick to authorize the purchase of a mortuary cart from gaming revenue. Any discussion from the board? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes 5 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you. 15A, secondary roads award bid for anal cord, get a metal pipe purchase of 2022, project CP 2022 for Metal Culverts Inc., uh, 4130, 758.
I recommend the purchase for Metal Culverts.
I will move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes 5 to 0.
Next item is, uh, Sioux City has requested a resolution of support from the Woodbury County Board. They're proposing to file for a rise grant to, uh, improve Alicia Avenue, which would be south of 225th Street. Uh, they're getting a new, uh, uh, Coal Link prod, Logistics Project, a new refrigeration plant that's going to be built on the old, uh, 27 Flags property. And, uh, part of the money for that, since it's half a county road, would be coming out of the county system. So the, the Iowa DOT commissioners wanna see that there is county support for the use of those funds. I wholeheartedly recommend it.
So this is 15B, approved for resolution, supporting rise grant application to improve Alicia Avenue and support the Coal Link Logistics Development. I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes 5 to 0. Moving on, item.
Requires all five signatures and the county auditor.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Reports on committee meetings.
Had a conservation board meeting the week before last and didn't have a chance to share last time. I'll be short. Uh, we're looking to come with a proposal as far as water and sewer and think that there's good things to come from it. So look for that potentially next week and I think the cost of doing a lot is gonna be relatively little in the grand scheme of things. But we have programs.
Anybody else? Had a couple SenCo, Certs meetings, et cetera. Moving forward with our building, they are gonna get the loan request to the county here probably by our next agenda. Dennis, I don't know if they've contacted you yet on that. But it was approved to request that, so, um, item 17 says a concern round two. Go ahead.
Pat Gill, county auditor. This is in regard to the action taken, uh, January 11th by the Board of Supervisors. Supervisor Taylor, uh, put forth a motion, agenda item, couple of them, that, uh, one dealt with separating the, uh, supervisors' pay from the compensation board recommendation. What code section allowed you to do that?
Joshua, there's a change to Iowa code that allowed us to, um, do that, but I don't have the chapter and verse memorized.
And then you took.
Is that correct?
And you took action to reduce the compensation board recommendation to 0% for supervisors?
Correct.
And what code section allowed you to do that?
Uh, again, I don't have the chapter and verse memorized, but I mean, I allow our assistant county attorney to cite that for you. If that, so is that, Mr. Chair, can I ask that?
I don't have it in front of me. I was asked at the time and I was comfortable with the motion that was put forward.
331-907 says the Board of Supervisors may adopt a decrease in compensation paid to the supervisors irrespective of county compensation board recommendation, compensation schedule or approve changes in the compensation paid to other elected officials. A decrease in compensation paid to the supervisor shall be approved by the Board of Supervisors no less than 30 days before the county budget is certified under section 2417. Nowhere in that motion did it say you were reducing the Board of Supervisors' compensation pay.
Nowhere in that what?
In your either motions said that you were reducing the Board of Supervisors' compensation. 331-907.
Can I ask you? The increase to 0 was the motion, was it not?
You can't do that. The compensation board recommendation, it says, there's nowhere in here says that you can separate that compensation board. That's what the conversation was about, across the board.
I, I think our assistant, and, and I don't wanna speak for him, so if I'm wrong and if you, if it ends up taking the 22%, I won't, but if you could weigh in, um, and let us know if you feel that that was an illegal action that we're now hearing about for the first time right now.
I didn't realize.
No, and that, and I'm not.
Section this afternoon.
I understand that argument that Pat's making.
Is it one that you agree with or do you think is not legally valid?
Show me where it says they can do it.
Well, we're not gonna discover. Well, we're not going to discover it today.
It clearly says in code that the board can reduce. I mean, that was the reason for the change in code, because the boards used to hide behind these things.
It says, the only, the only motion that was appropriate was the one that Matthew Ung made the week later that reduced compensation. That's the only motion that was appropriate. It is not in compliance. The motions, the two motions that you made are not in compliance with the law. And I will ask that, we will put it together. He can review it. But that compensation, that code section does not allow for what you did, in my opinion.
And I absolutely disagree because I think that was what the legislature did, when the boards used to hide behind the compensation board and say...
To you again.
Yes, please.
The Board of Supervisors may adopt a decrease in compensation paid to supervisors irrespective of the county compensation board recommended compensation schedule or other approved changes in the compensation paid to elected officers. A decrease in compensation paid to supervisors shall be adopted by the Board of Supervisors no less than 30 days before the county budget certified under section 28...
I completely disagree with your reading. I think Joshua may too, but if you guys work it out and we're legally bound to take 22%, let us know.
Well...
But I think it's, I don't think it's true.
Well, in which case would... If Pat is correct, the legal effect would be, so the record, what the board did tonight was the 45, or whatever the reduction was, and that would be applied to the supervisors as well. It sounds like we're being asked to revisit that, and we can do that.
Well, the worst-case scenario is we take the 45.56, and then next week, we can move a reduction of whatever percentage that would be to put us back down to the zero.
When was the law changed?
Uh, I think it was four or six years ago, because here's what happened. They used to all hide behind that, right? And say, we're being forced to take 22%, woe is us. But the legislature, in its wisdom, said, no, you can break yourselves out and treat yourselves... Megan Jones put it forward. Good job over in Sioux County.
So you support that law, but not the back-to-blue?
Oh, I support both.
No, you don't.
Yes, I do. Chad, you know.
All right, hey, we're done, we're done, we're done, done.
You're in a public meeting as an elected official. Thank you.